I'd like to call the meeting to order, can I get a roll call please?
Mrs. Craig.
Here.
Mrs. Fields.
Here.
Mr. Hyden.
Here.
Mr. Nuss.
Here.
Mrs. Ranzan.
Here.
Mrs. Field.
Here.
Mrs. Ballson here. Mrs. Rudy.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
We have a call.
Can you please throw me the slides?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Sussex Wanted Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Sterile Ledger.
The Sussex Wanted Regional School District is a responsive, caring, child-centered community. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a confident, competent, lifelong runner and productive, responsible citizen for providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment through a partnership of family, schools, and communities.
At this time we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Getting everyone, just to give everyone a little background on this work session, so usually what is, well, the service is far too crazy. What's typically gone on over at least the last year are these work sessions are held in small subcommittees where, you know, four or so people can sit around and talk with the department heads in the district and they kind of talk about areas like curriculum, special services, buildings and grounds, technology. So the board requests to have a larger work session, committee of the whole, so they all be present. And what we've done in the past with that is the department heads kind of give a little mini presentations to the board and then we engage in some discussion and deliberation. We're also fortunate to have a short presentation by Ms. Cords and Ms. Lawrence about our transitional kindergarten program. They requested me to go to a meeting and kind of just hear some of the ideas that they had about the program. So I encouraged them, if they were available, to come out and talk to the board about it, just to give everybody kind of a common foundation of understanding of what it is, what they do, where they're looking to go with the program, and some areas of growth that they think they perceive. So we can start with the PowerPoint presentation, the Google slideshow. Mr. Kronsky, Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Petrowski will bring to you some information. Mrs. Reicher has some stuff to share. I'm just here to highlight just a couple of key areas of curriculum for the board.
Is this kind of the weekly rundown of the report?
Oh, I've been getting hit with this all day. What's, can we take a formal poll of the board, I mean after tonight, do you feel like you need a rundown?
No.
No.
No. Have a good weekend, y'all. Have a good time.
You mean he didn't?
Say Brenda the typing. Gosh, what are we, what? Say Brenda the typing.
So just to highlight a couple of areas of curriculum that we're kind of thinking about focusing on over the summer is the potential to expand our ESL program. Folks may remember that this year we brought on a part-time ESL teacher and our ESL population is continually to expand, so it's becoming more challenging to meet those students' needs and it may result in a situation where we have to reflect on making that at first and potentially full-time. So that's something we're going to be crunching the numbers on over the next month or so and bring a recommendation to the board. Another area that I'm going to request the board approve on the next agenda is joining the consortium for ESL. So what happens generally, I think, on an ongoing basis is the state allocates from right, Mrs. Reikers, a small, very small, relatively small portion of monies to school districts for their ESL. In our case, I think it's like eight hundred or fifteen hundred hours.
This year it's fourteen something two.
Fourteen and change. So what's, from time to time happen is that, I, my understanding is districts say, in order to get that money you have to do X, Y, and Z, and X, Y, and Z is so cumbersome and large that they end up not taking it. But one of the strategies you can use is joining the consortium. So Mr. Arturo Benedetto over at Pacnon has started that amongst the superintendents and if you join that, the requirements that you have to facilitate become less cumbersome and you can take advantage of your money. So that would be something that we're looking to do for our ESL program. One area that I continue to focus on, you know, as a multi-year goal, is to focus on math. We made some structural improvements at the middle school. That's going to be connected to a process that Mr. Linsky and Mr. Schors are working on currently called the targeted improvement process. It's a money allocation program that they have to develop an action plan around. So they're currently working on that and math is a big area of focus for that. We talked about transitional kindergarten, that's one of the highlights of the Lawrence School and again, I'll be up to talk about that. Another area, it may not seem jazzy, but managing the updated schedule changes at West is a significant thing. You know, going from the teaming schedule to teachers going back to teaching multiple subject areas. So finalizing PD over the summer, not just for everybody, but specifically for that, getting people into, we've already started some of it, but to get people back up to speed on the subject matter areas that they weren't necessarily working with. And another area that came out of my last talk meetings with staff was trying to facilitate interschool collaboration. So second grade teachers want to meet the third grade teachers, fifth grade teachers want to meet the sixth grade teachers and so on. We've done some of that with the middle school and high school. But that's another area for PD that we're looking to focus on. So we can turn it over to.
Thank you. When Mr. Gual asked us to put together slides, he suggested that we talk about, you know, the big accomplishments over the year. And in finance, you know, we process orders, we pay bills, we pay staff, we make sure they have health benefits. So it's really hard unless something goes wrong for you guys to really hear anything about what goes on in finance. But one of the ways that we get measured is the audit. So this year, I was very proud of the business office and any other staff that had input into it, that we had no recommendations for the first time since I've been here. So hopefully we can keep that going forward, but in a district this size, it is difficult to achieve that. So our next audit will take place in late October, November. The auditors are usually here for a couple of weeks. It involves a lot of people, a lot of work. It's a fun time. The upcoming agenda in June, so for those of you that have been here before, it is a lengthy agenda. It's the time when you do all the annual appointments, adoptions, designations, other approval items, as well as approving projects that are going on into the year. You know, things that went out for proposal, all those kinds of things, the transportation contracts. So I will, when the, that agenda will go out next Friday to the board and I will, in the weekly rundown of next week, I will kind of try to highlight some of the key things that I think you may have questions on if you haven't been through it before. And then again, I'd ask that if you have any questions, once you get it and you don't understand why that's on there or what we're doing, just give me a call or email me or let Mr. Gual know and we'll try to, you know, take care of that before the board meeting. And then just to talk briefly about the budget for this coming school year. You know, it's a living document, there is pluses and minuses. Mr. Gual just highlighted one that we, you know, we budgeted for a half-time ESL teacher and now we may have to increase it to full-time and offer benefits. So, you know, hopefully there's a corresponding minus that goes with it, but it constantly goes up and down throughout the year. And I'll try to keep the board apprised if we get to a point, because now we just don't have, the budget is so, I don't want to say trimmed, but it's trimmed down. If I get nervous about something, I'll certainly let you know if we have to make adjustments. And I'm not saying that I think that that'll happen, but as things like that come up, we have to, we have to find the money somewhere. And that's all I have.
Projects completed, and I'm sure you guys have seen some of this before in the weekly rundowns and some of the agenda items. Boiler redundancy in all three schools has been finished, completed. There's a couple odds and ends that are just tightening up at the Lawrence School and the Wanted School, but they fired boilers, everything works, we can bid there. So if we ever lose a boiler, meaning one goes down, we'll have something to fall back on. So we won't have to miss a day of school or so forth. SMS Gymnasium Project, future school board, same thing, everything's in place. I think we're waiting on the vendor to complete one item on that. And it's been a back and forth battle, I'm sure some of you could attest. The SMS sort of terminal project seating flooring, that's also completed, looks good. We're actually hit the stage this summer and try to brighten up that area a little bit. Needs a bit of sanding and some, some luff, we'll say. So we'll be focusing on that. And also in the auditorium, we did have the two walls that had some, some damage, some hang damage, plaster damage. We took care of that over spring break. So we're, the space is looking new, it's looking good. So I'm happy with the progress we've made, because that's, essentially that's the hub. That's the hub of the, you know, the district, that's where everyone goes for assemblies, concerts. So, you know, to me, that's the area you want, you want it to look nice, you know, to the public and whoever else happens to come into your building. SMS LED project, that's, I want to say ninety-five percent complete, though has a couple more small rooms to do, but we're on the last leg of it. So I just threw it on here. We've actually cut our energy consumption in this school drastically by just switching out the bulbs to LEDs. SMS restroom rehab, the ones right down here, we tackled that this summer. New flooring, new partitions, new toilet bowls, new urinals. We try to focus on one every year and dress it up a little bit, just because some of them, you know, they haven't had anything done with them since the beginning, since the, original, some of them are original for the building. So they, they need it. West tile abatement, that's been an ongoing project, we've done it in phases. They did like hallway, we've been doing hallways. They did, I want to say two or three years ago, they did the main section a year before that. I did the carver going down like the, what is it, fourth, fifth grade wing there? The third or fourth. I was getting mixed up with the sections. But we did that area and then we started, last, last summer, we started hopping into some of the classrooms upstairs. Just getting out the old asbestos tile, getting new stuff in, makes the room look a lot brighter. SMS water fountain bottle fill-o-station, I'm sure some of you have seen it come through the main hall there next to the principal's office. Looks good, I think it's another step in the right direction as being more eco-friendly. The kids can now go up to the water fountain with a bottle and fill it and it's a little, there's like a little counter on it so they can see how many bottles we've saved from going into the landfill. So I mean, it's a cool, something for the kids to look at and actually see it. West master clock, we had replaced that recently this year due to it just failing. CL water line, this was a biggie. Basically the line running from the well into the school, I discovered a leak in it. Could have been, could have been there for a while, could have been slow, started to slowly develop into something bigger so we prepared that over the winter break while school was out and that project went to, went to the right.
That's the one Frank, where we documented everything submitted to insurance.
Insurance, yes.
We're still hopeful that we're going to get something.
Yep, we get reimbursed for everything minus the pipe. So the excavation end of it, we're getting reimbursed for it, because that's, that's really the bulk of it. That's the bulk of the work, the excavation, the pipe is really nominal, so to speak. And obviously there were various other repairs throughout the district, I'm not going to go into everything because I would keep you guys here all night. Maintenance has completed two thousand eight hundred eighty work orders this school calendar year. Upcoming projects and same thing, I'm sure you guys have seen some of this in the weekly rundowns. The CL paving project, which desperately needs attention, the main area where the teachers park, staff park, and you have the main buses coming in. We've done our best to patch it the past year, you know, with filling the holes here and there, but it's definitely, it's about time.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, it's a good project to report, I mean, you have your image grades that are like something, you know, probably four or five inches. We did do a walkthrough with the company and we mentioned previously that we're going to look to have additional ballards, they have a bunch of ballards, but we're going to look to have those additional ballards put in, in the entrance ways.
Window film, basically we had a, we did a district assessment and our security guards actually did it. They went around and identified a few doors and windows where we wanted to install this. I would say they're, they're really areas in the building where they're not high volume traffic, so they're kind of out of the way, that's why you'd want to put them on there, just to slow any potential intruder coming in. So we're going to be doing that over summer and just wait to firm up a date with the vendor on that. The SMS tile for hallway, as you guys come into annex over here, you'll notice like the ramp coming up and all that tile on the desk at the door where the faculty bathroom was done, we're redoing that this summer. There's some something parts and some uneven tiles, so I just want to, that's another area that the public, you know, especially for board meetings when they come into the school, first impression, you know, I want it to be good when they walk in. SMS front of building we have, what Mike and I have actually talked about is pulling out all the shrubs in front of the school. We're going to power wash the front and the one left side where the auditorium is and we're going to do some kind of planters in front of the school instead of shrubs.
Yeah, we kind of touched on that community outrage too, right? My wife watches all those curb appeal shows, so.
Yes, GTD.
Oh, so she gave you the idea and you're taking it further.
Ah, I see.
It's also a security thing, because you have bushes there, there is the problem for someone to hide behind or leave something in there. And it just, it looks cleaner instead of, you know, because I think it's in the contract for the landscape where you trim them two or three times a year, but even that isn't enough. So just pulling them out, it's going to reduce maintenance, it will look a lot clearer. SMS stage rehab, I just spoke on that a minute ago. We're going to be sanding it, re-staining it and dressing up. There's a couple areas where there's like wood damage, so we'll be addressing that. And actually I put it in there twice, so.
And yet you put it in.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Excited about that. Jazzed for it, you're ready.
I, I think you, I think you've walled myself.
Mr. Kronsky, before you go, so some of the things that Frank was talking about and Mr. Kronsky was going to be talking about, those are the kinds of things that will be on the agenda that I was saying that I would explain, but those are the kinds of things that you'll see, like, you know, we have either quotes or we're doing them through the co-op, but we'll ask the board for the approval on them. Either trying to put in the agenda, this is a budgeted item, or just a regular approval. So those are, when you see them, they'll probably, you'll probably go, oh yeah.
Now, if I can just preface this to Mr. Kronsky, Mr. Kronsky's very prepared to talk about the dark fiber and the gigawatts and all of that stuff he had over, what was it, nineteen slides? Nineteen slides, so anybody, he's thoroughly prepared to speak about that if anybody has any questions. We kind of narrowed, made it a little more concise. Now, did it focus to, was it three or four?
Yeah.
We support, my team supports over two thousand devices. PCs, laptops, iPads, Chromebooks, phones, projectors, servers, you guys can read them. We support over a hundred software applications, from the accounting software to the Google, to, you know, like software suites that the children use. We also support the district testing, you know, artists' park, math and science, PLN maps and IMAP. Support teachers and staff, students, meeting school group, there's a pickling system, over thousands users if you count students. Since September, we've completed over two thousand requests to be. Last summer, we replaced the firewall. We upgraded our security stuff, camera software, upgraded the smart notebook software. I think that came out of meetings that they, they requested that. What do you call those meetings that you had time with that lady from State? Nah, the lady that came and did the thing with the easels and stuff like that.
Oh, the teacher man.
Right, right, right. Installed battery backups for security monitoring PCs, Chromebook refresh, which is further explained in the next slide, but I don't know, I might have cut that one. But I, I, I think I did send it in an update, everything that the towers do for an actual Chromebook setup. And we're rolling, and they rolled out third and sixth grade Chromebooks last year. Replaced all second grade iPads with Chromebooks, dusted out all PC projectors over the summer. Integrated our online payment system to work with the student information system. Set up and test all the computers, projectors, that's just like, kind of like summer stuff. Worked for this summer, another Chromebook refresh, so it wasn't on the next slide, sorry. Two hundred and thirty Chromebooks for third and sixth grade. Reconnected all classroom equipment, finished migrating our accounting software and database, things like that. Not really that exciting stuff, but it has to be done, right? We're installing with a new IP-based intercom and networking equipment that will, that is going to be calling on our plate because it is computer-based and it will be compliant with Alyssa's law.
And it runs on electricity, so it's.
So it's my problem. And normally, normally I can figure that stuff out, it's just this, this, this kind of thing. I really don't do that much, this kind of thing. Installing new battery backups and we're installing, you know, having the security guards here this summer, they were able to find, or this last year, they were able to find some sponsors, they requested some new cameras, glass, and things like that, sort of anything, something like that. That's it. I did, I got to deliver it, I think somebody knew that I would have never made that. But if you guys have any questions for me, like, you know, you can ask me, you can call me, you can email me, on anything.
Alright, so basically I just, you know, prepared a few points about the highlights from the year. Currently we have two hundred and eighty-nine students that are eligible for special ed and related services. The number pretty much holds steady. As quickly as we start to, to drop the number down, it, it tends to go back up. You know, for example, actually this school year, especially at the Watson School, before Christmas, we had twelve classified movements since September and Christmas. So a lot of the, the reason the number, it's a lot of students are moving into the district that are classified. And one of the things I keep carrying is that parents are moving here because they hear good things about our programs, which is a nice compliment, but it gets a little overwhelming at times for the three, three U students moving to, that are classified. So anyway, so for the most part, the number holds steady, you know, so I, I think we're doing pretty good with that. This time of year, most of my time is spent getting ready for the July summer school program. So it's sixteen days, pretty much throughout the month of July, although it does run until August. So we're starting July eighth, we're running through August second, Monday through Thursday only. And actually with the three movers, we now have fifty-four confirmed students. So, but for the most part, you know, there you go, the class lists are a little bit of a flying journey, but they're ready to go. Staff has been informed, so, you know, the, the receiving teachers are speaking with the, you know, the current teachers to that way, you know, they're prepared, they're ready. For the most part, the program will be running at Lawrence, or actually the whole program will be running at Lawrence. We'll do those two main wings. We all gonna, everybody's going to be entering through the kindergarten wing so that we avoid the projects that are going on, especially with the parking lot. And the contractor has assured us that for the most part, the debris and stuff, those kinds of jobs will be done after the students leave or on Fridays when the students aren't around. So we should have access to the playground the majority of the time and if they are doing something that we can't let the students go out, we'll let them know in advance.
And then on that preliminary meeting, we had a site home construction. It's probably atypical for directors, special services to come, but we invited Vicki and she welcomed the opportunity just because we knew we had that there and she knows the incentives concerning the program. So it's good having you there, very helpful.
So, anyway, so we're very excited in this summer program. Spent a lot of time working on policies, procedures. One of the things that I, I discovered over the, the past year was that our, our teams do a lot of really, really good things, but they all kind of do the same thing differently. So been working really, really hard to get everybody on the same page so that if you go from one building to the next, to the next, you know, what to expect and consistency in, in how things are addressed, you know, in, in the department. The other thing that we've been working on, myself and John and my assistant, the special ed Medicaid initiative is a way that we get money from the state to help offset some of the extraordinary costs. So one of the things that we were not doing was going for nursing services. So we have been actively working to adjust the IDPs, so it's these who have IDPs, the nursing services are now listed in the IDPs and then you can start requesting reimbursement for that. So fingers crossed. So the other thing too with the semi, that I was speaking with the staff and we're going to try, we try hard to coordinate this year, we're going to try even harder to coordinate it better next year. So with the, the services that are eligible for Medicaid reimbursement, and there's a lot of them, there's counseling, OT, PT, nursing. So a lot of our students get speech, get multiple services in one day. The problem is that Medicaid will only reimburse it for a single service even if the student's got five services in Medicaid. So what we're trying to do is spread the services out throughout the week so that way we, you know, we can get the maximum amount. So that's something, actually my insight, that I'll be, you know, really, really working with the students to do. And, you know, the other big thing too this year was, you know, we really tried to address the social emotional aspects of our students. We had a speaker from Jimmy's House came in and spoke with the teachers who were in the classroom. We also had Jimmy's House come in and speak to the nurse and staff, the school counselors, the child study team, also about things to look for, you know, with children so that we know how if we suspect somebody needs assistance, how we can roll out, getting them, recognizing they need assistance and helping them get the assistance. Our CPAD had a speaker come in on childhood wellness, we also had a speaker on childhood anxiety. That actually we did that with their PTL, that was really well attended. And we also had Byron come in and they do RTI exceptionally well. They're one of the recommendations is the M model. And they came in and we actually hosted a huge RTI workshop for the county. So that was, that was really well attended and one of those useful. Alright, so goals for next year, I do want to continue working on ways to address the social emotional needs of our students. You know, one of the things, I know we, we use here the term mindfulness and the teachers ask for mindfulness training. So those are things that I want to look into, looking with the staff on really what can we do. I know we're here to learn, but if you're distracted about other things, you know, because you're not feeling quite right, we got to address that too so that we can, you know, teach you how to be even ready. One of the big things, big part of my job, the medical is reading the IDPs for legal compliance. I have to say I'm very fortunate that the child study team and, you know, teaching staff, they do very, really good IDPs. But there's only room, you know, keep, keep improving, keep improving. So one of the things that I'm looking forward to is in October, we will be having, one of the terms from, from, we'll be speaking on the special education aspects. But not just of how it affects the special ed part, but also what the general ed features need to keep in mind. Because our students do spend time in the general ed setting and those teachers are still legally obligated to be compliant with the IDPs. So I'm very excited that we have that happening in October. And then, you know, as I was just talking, I really, really do want to work hard with the teams and the related service providers so that we can maximize our funding opportunities through the study and then there's also something called extraordinary needs, so I'm going to take advantage of that as well.
I don't know if anybody has any conversations, discussion points for department heads or any questions?
Probably the breakout tonight.
Probably the breakout tonight, I think, for us.
I have a question about the after-school step-up program. I know it wasn't included in this, but um I had a few parents um asked me to ask this question for them. Now, the after-school step-up program is paid for by a grant, right?
Step-up actually isn't under me, but I can put, from what I understand, yes, step-up is funded through Title I.
Okay, Title I. Now, there's certain kids um in special education classes that aren't eligible for that because of Title I funding?
Yes.
Is there a way to include that into the grant so they are included into it?
Yeah, because Title I is for students that wish. So.
Now, wouldn't include special education?
Well, because those services are funded through a different grant, but they, and so it's called supplement, it's actually illegal to do that because what you're doing is you're double giving, so you you can't do that, it's it's double giving.
But from what I understand, this district has done it before in the past.
I can't speak to that if I wasn't here.
Okay.
So, but I I can tell you it's double giving, you you can't do that. Well, wait, let me take that back. There is at times, but it also depends on the student. So let's just say that a student has an IEP for, let's say this math.
Okay.
All right, and he's getting math services to the IEP and that's it. In that case, then yes, other services could be provided through the Title I that are not provided to the IEP. But, you know, so but most of my students get the whole gamut of services now assigned, such as home reading. So, um, you know, so there there are a few areas you can do that, but for one part, like I said, if they're getting it through the IEP grant, then they cannot let it through this the Title I one.
Are you very comfortable going to transitional kindergarten? Then I had some kind of outstanding items that I can talk about in public session, then some other things next session. But uh, you're all comfortable going transitional kindergarten?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Tremendous amount of work orders that went out from everybody, so thank you, because it's not easy. And I, we met each other over the summer while Frank was literally doing the work, so, and you had a lot going on, so thank you. And thank you all for what you're doing, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming. You all set, ladies?
Yes.
Do you want me to do this? Does everyone know Mrs. Court, someone's more, I'm sorry? I was just asking if everybody knows.
Oh, I'm Pam Courts, I live at Lawrence, at kindergarten, and I'm preschool teacher. And I've been transitioning over the past two years in our program, and then through the age that I've been in our fully disabled preschool program.
So first of all, um, Mr. Gall used the term presentation. I prefer to say this conversation. And um, we started out after the.
I stand corrected.
Hi, no, 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 the reason I'm saying that is we invite you to interrupt us. If you have a question while we're saying something, please do, because it's, I think, better to address it um that at that moment than wait until we. I think it's kind of a button to push.
Oh, the one on the right, the one on the right. The one on the left goes.
Part of the idea of them being here was they kinda all requested a meeting with me and it, we sat and we had a good conversation, they kinda made aware of some challenges, concerns um that they had, and I said, well, has anybody ever talked to the board about it? And I don't think it ever occurred, you know, I don't think there was any formal.
There's a committee meeting.
Yeah, the other curriculum, yeah, yeah.
But never.
Alright, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity for them, because they're really the experts in the area, who've been doing it.
And, and, you know, and I wanna start by saying, you know, I've been doing early childhood my entire career and I won't tell you the number because it's really embarrassing, but it's really big. And um consequently, I have a lot of experience with this kind of um conversation and with a conversation on developmental appropriate practice in early childhood and developmentally appropriate curriculum. Um, Mrs. Lawrence has been doing the transitional kindergarten for two years now, she's fabulous, I'm going to tell you that. Um, and I'm pretty picky about how we work with really young children. Um, so then the question is, why did we ask for this conversation with Mr. Gall? We've got it, we're very happy, thank you for you allowing us the opportunity to have it. Uh, the question starts out, why do we even wanna have it? And that's because there's basically two kinds of children that we, as early childhood teachers, consider uh high risk for their educational career. And that's the child that's really, really developmentally young and chronologically young at the same time. I don't wanna say chronologically young, because many of them don't need a gift of time, and I don't wanna say just developmentally young, because if you have, say, a child that turns six in October, we're not gonna give him a gift of time, he's already old, he's very young, and we're gonna pray that he matures rapidly as we're trying to teach them. Um, so, and the other one is the children, and we have a lot of this in this district, children that don't get the opportunity to go to preschool. It really sets them at a disadvantage from day one. And if you take that and couple it with the developmental youngness and the age, it's like, it's like really a red flash going above their head and you do, it's, please, let's get them where we need to get them. Ultimately, we want children to feel good about themselves, we want them to start out from day one with success. And this is why we see this program, but we came to Mr. Gall because we were looking for, we were looking to tweak what we already think is a good thing. We needed something better than what we currently have in terms of clarity, in terms of establishing criteria. So clarity in terms of what exactly is this program? Do they come to kindergarten and then they go to first grade? Transitional, or do they come to transitional kindergarten, go to transitional first grade? Or do we go to transitional kindergarten, go to kindergarten? It is kinda too loose, we feel, and we're here to represent kindergarten teachers as a whole, we've all talked about this back when we met with Mr. Gall.
Yeah, they they were all together.
We just were elected to be the spokespeople, so.
And so as looking at the kindergarten team, we have these two students, we've talked to our teachers who have been teaching for many years, and we have these two students, and, you know, we're looking at age and the the readiness also. So when we look at them and we look at the curriculum that we have in place, which is a great curriculum, but it is very ha- um fast paced for them. And when we look at that, we wanna be sure to make sure that they are successful within the curriculum, and especially for the young five. If they're not ready to sit and learn and be engaged, we're pushing to do them things that they're not ready to. So we wanna bring down that learning into appropriate by using hands-on, engaging centers and so on, but in a more appropriate fashion instead of the curriculum way that kindergarten establishes. And when we look at the students, there's some students, like we said, Mrs. Court said that there's preschoolers that don't have the exposure, they haven't been taught how to sit and do circle and uh interact with students. So focusing on the priorities of starting up in the foundation and building up to what they're expected to do. So kind of starting from the foundation point and then building up what they need to do and being ready to go into the SASS uh curriculum that is established in kindergarten.
Where the wishy-washiness has come in for us is who goes into the program? And what exactly the program is, again, clarity and the criteria. So you said return the case.
You heard me for a moment, but once you're in there, what are you signing up for?
Exactly, well, that's the part of the clarity and and that's, and we're looking, you know, maybe to the curriculum committee here, we're looking for input from everyone on the board. Um, a- as a, again, kindergarten preschool team, we came up with a recommended definition for our transitional kindergarten.
And there's many transitional programs out there, we've really done our research on looking at mission statements, what schools offer and how they state it. So when looking at it, we said this is a first uh, a first year, a two-year pre-kindergarten slash kindergarten program that uses a literacy, mathematically rich readiness curriculum that is age and developmentally appropriate based on New Jersey standards. So we're following the kindergarten standards, but breaking them down into the readiness of what the students are able to do.
And that's a fancy way of saying, we are giving your child a gift of time. We are giving your child the opportunity to feel like a kindergartner, come to school, getting, you know, they're part of the kindergarten, but their track is a little different. And, but we want this, we want you to consider establishing this track, because there's predictability for everyone. And if we go in and then all of a sudden we're going, well, maybe no, maybe we're gonna put this one into kin- first grade next year, maybe we're gonna put this one in kindergarten. We all know the importance of predictability and it creates uneasiness in everybody. It it makes parents uneasy, it it makes staff, it makes us uneasy. I mean, I made a recommendation and then all of a sudden, you know, well, maybe not, maybe I shouldn't have made that recommendation. So we as a staff are trying to get this established so that it it's a plan versus, you know, let's wait and see. Um, let me just turn this page here. So, we also came up with, we we didn't create a mission statement, but we are giving you the points we are hoping to include in a mission statement. And by the way, we are more than happy to be a bigger part of this process other than recommendations. If you don't wanna do the work and you want us to type things up, but we're looking to to get your blessing and and to have you consider that this is something we can move forward with. Uh, and so these are the points we hoped to include in the mission statement.
Um, allows for a gift of time for children who demonstrate notable developmental youngness um by providing a two-year kindergarten program, and that's a TK program and then going to kindergarten. Um, improving social, emotional, physical, language and cognitive development within the program. Um, building self-esteem and identity, so what we talked about, coming to school, being ready, knowing that I'm a student, this is what I'm doing, I'm learning, I'm active in the community, so continuing that from their level. And the children entering the program will go to a regular kind of program after finishing this program. Um, and based on this mission statement too, like we're looking at criteria, we did look at, we have, we looked at the age component as one of the key criteria, but we also have a national screen that we do, we do the kindergarten readiness test. At all kindergarten students who register via uh deadline, they come in, we read, we test them, all the teachers sit down with them, and we do a readiness, and it has to do with pre- um, like clueless in fact, such as can they write their name, do they know letters, do, can they sit still? And there's all of these components, and they get a national score, and this score is based on all the kindergartens who have it. So we're not just looking at the five minutes, we actually have a score we look at too, and then it's also a conversation with the parents. So there's multiple criteria that we're not looking at, not just age, but we're looking at this developmental readiness. Are they ready to learn and where do they fall nationally?
Do you do anything else to locate data after they're in this transitional kindergarten?
In terms of after they finish the, in the kindergarten program, or?
Well, like during, you're saying that it's hard to find out if Jimmy's ready to go onto regular kindergarten or is there something that you do ongoing in the in the year to see how they've grown?
Oh, yes, so within my program right now, I do constant assessments, every single marking period's assessment. I also have open communication with my parents, write conferences, um, very open where are they are, and I also compare it to where the regular kindergarten students are, so I compare those two data points at all times. Um, and that's how we've been doing it, hopefully really want to focus more on like where they should be within pre-kindergarten program and not comparing, because I feel like that can be, you know, as you can say, like two different avenues.
One of the things, I mean, I I, my son was in a transitional program, I have experienced with it at different levels, okay? And one of the things as in, I mean, I've I've been a part of NACI, National Association of Education, with young children for a very long time. They were big toward this, then they, you know, there's been back and forth conversations. But the reality of it is, one of the things that's unclear for people is they think that the criteria is whether they're doing well academically. That's the bottom of the list, that really isn't important. It kinda goes um to what Vicki said before, you know, if they're thinking about other things, they really can't learn. And in this case, we're really targeting the very young, very young. We're talking, and I will tell you, I just have shit as little detail with you. I I researched different things when I was preparing for this, and I was shocked, because I looked at the nation and what the starting um cutoff dates were for the entire nation, most of this nation is September first. Some couple were August, there were a couple that were even in July, and then some of them, and I don't wanna say we're the only ones, but the interesting I saw, you may know this already, that in New Jersey, I didn't even know this, is that we have a, we have to have October first, and we can make it later if we want, but we can't make it earlier. It's kind of a little interesting thing, because the rest of the, you know, nation, I guess, recognizes that we wanna make them a little older, because the curriculum really has become more advanced, and they're just not ready to sit and do that. Um, so it really is more focused on them being ready socially, emotionally and physically. Um, so, did that answer your question? Um, the criteria, and I'm gonna put big emphasis, we just said this again, but I wanna say, you know, we don't, I'll tell you as a teacher, I don't look at their ages when I'm deciding how I feel about them. I don't look, I don't wanna know. I I wanna see how I, how they are, and then I say, hmm, I wonder, and then I go, oh, look at that. You know, his birthday is September fifteenth, you know? Uh, and there's a danger, because we don't want to just focus on age. And we also don't want to focus on youngness or immature, we wanna see it together for this program piece. So the criteria that we're hoping to establish, we're suggesting, is that um children that turn five sep- between September first or later, the October first, and demonstrate developmental youngness. Um, I've had students, I have one this year that, oh my goodness, I did that move, like, oh, let me see, look, I did one of these. Oh my goodness, he's gonna be six in October when school starts, you know, he's not a candidate, doesn't matter how young he is. And we wanna kind of strip this a little bit, because it it can cause problems. Uh, quite frankly, I I shouldn't agree, but I'll say that that's what happened to my son. My son, I gave an extra year, and then they decided to give him transitional again, and I, it it was a problem. So we, I recognize that, and we wanna make sure we include that in the criteria. Um, and then that test that Mariola mentioned is a big component, because it tests not just their academic, it it takes, it 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 really is looking at the whole child, that's the catchphrase when you're an early child, is teaching to the whole child, socially, emotional, uh intellectual, physical.
And so we don't know these students coming in, they come and register, and this is the first time we're meeting their face, we're saying hi to them, and we're doing assessment on them, and we're looking at all these criteria, we don't really know them. Some parents we have in our system already in preschool, so we kind of know them from the prior teachers who recommend them, Mrs. Court's class, but a lot of students we don't know, we have like eighty-something kids that should register, and we've never met them before until they walked into our school. So that test really helps us figure out who they are and the readiness scale is based on that.
The other thing we would like to include is that parents must be in full support of having their child go two years of kindergarten. If they're not, they're not a good candidate, because what happens is that ends up spilling over into that child's life like he failed. This is not a retention, a lot of people look at this as a retention, it is not a retention, it is a delay in start, and there's a difference. And if a parent is not on board, we wanna back off and say, okay, this is not really for you. You can't save everybody, you know, and um I can't make you think differently, and unfortunately, it will be harmful if we push it. So we would want parents to know upfront at the get-go. Uh, I have three parents this year that have asked me for this program, they know they want their child to go to kindergarten the second year. Um, and then we would like to see parent and teacher recommendation be part of this discussion. So we don't, we wanna look at that age and that developmental maturity, but let's say a child's birthday is in July. You know, now they're not really September first, but if you, as a as a teacher, and I've worked with that child, holy crow, this child really still is very young. We wanna be able to consider that space permitted, okay? Uh, and then, we want the decision to be part of, this is the big one. Um, sometimes these programs become dumping grounds. You know, you got a kid that's behavioring, and they think, well, remember, it's a little lower in this class, let's put him in there. You know, maybe that's good for that child with the behavior, but it really isn't, because we want them to go from pre-K, not pre-K, uh TK to K, and if they're there only for behaviors, that's not going to go magically away, because you're a year older, you know, um, okay, that's my thought.
And also looking at the criteria, we had more students coming in, we have a positive word in the community, and we have people coming in asking about the program. So when looking at our program, we just wanna be able to, we can inform parents, we can have this written down and as a reflection of, this is our mission statement, this is what we have as a district for our students, where it's very clear, I don't say black and white, like it is, you know, it's.
Clarity.
It's clarity, so they are understanding what we have to offer them.
Because as teachers, we wanna make recommendations, but we're uncertain what's gonna happen, and so we don't even have the clarity. Um, thoughts outside the box, it's the last slide, so I I promise you we're almost done, but thoughts outside the box. Uh, I know we we have financial issues in this district, so the first one is gonna probably make you gasp a little bit, but I I don't need it to make you gasp. Again, a equal part of this problem is so many children don't get preschool experience. And, you know, um, we've wondered before and it was not an option, but I'm hoping that maybe we can think about this. It doesn't have to, we're not looking at this for next year, but think about, you know, maybe these low-income children that when they end up here, they fill out the form for free lunch and we're giving them free lunch. If we, if they can't feed their children, they certainly can't afford to send them to a private education school. And maybe we can create a sliding scale or a free opportunity if they qualify. And I threw something right after that, I had no idea, but you know, Head Start used to be in this community and then they moved to Newton. And I'm wondering if there might be some government funds available if we are accepting children that are low income into the preschool program. You know, go ahead.
Isn't that what they just did in Franklin last year or in the middle of last year? I think in Franklin School District, they started in January where they had the low-income, um, kids are going full day.
You know, it's money, so you know, this is a
I believe a couple of districts, Franklin, Newton, were recipients of a state grant that was applied for, that was the year or two ago.
But again, and I put that as the next one, looking at grants that we might be able to get something because this community has a lot of children that don't get the opportunities. And you know, the thing that crossed my mind was Head Start because they were here, who knows, maybe they could supplement some of the tuition that we would be charging or not. And then finally, um,
Like, it's panning up, our numbers are growing for the program right now for next year and it just continues to grow. We see this, um, these children coming in with these age and criteria and possibly opening it to a half-day program, having a morning class and afternoon class to service more children and giving them the opportunity and going further, so it all, we just wanted to start thinking about the things that might come and, well, we can provide more for
So you've given us the opportunity already and I think the program speaks for itself, I think that the children are successful and that the parents do love it. But there is some ambiguity and there is some unease from, I mean, I've received calls, you know, what do I do, like, we're looking for, you know, clarity.
I think you also have some isolated situations that I've interacted with, a small number of parents about, like, maybe it wasn't crystallized in their mind what was happening because I think the board administration was supportive of different pathways and things, which
Right. Which, which can be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, which could be meaningful, but in some instances may, would be almost more detrimental in leaving gaps and things like that.
It can be very meaningful, but the problem is, in that process, you're not, they're not getting the full kindergarten program in the first year with the transitional. I mean, again, this is
Meaning if you go from TK to first grade.
Right, right. So we as teachers, that teacherly childhood, you know, we're like, you know, that wasn't what I was signing up for, you know what I mean? And I, I say that with, you know, no hard feelings toward any decision. I, I think it's great to be outside the box all over the place, but as early childhood teachers, we're hoping you can help us for clarity. Thank you for your time.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Do you, if, if a child moves into the district that, um, it can go to the preschool or the transitional kindergarten, are they allowed to go during the year? Like if they move in October or November?
Whoa, that's a tricky one.
That is tricky, um, we haven't had that happen, obviously, you just start with a class, we haven't had any students move into a program. Um, I would say would have to depend on the students and the information, like their age, how, are they younger?
Right.
Um, do they have a screener, can we give them a screener? We right now have like five students who on the, we need to screen these students, sometimes students we can get a better grasp of who they are before they enter kindergarten. Um, so I think we would have to look and see, but I
I will say that if we had a better vision of what we had, then we would have an established criteria. And if a student moved into the district and was meeting that criteria, it would be a simple decision versus
Right, and I think that child should have the opportunity, whether they came in like five of the school year or not.
You know, the problem is, and this is why we threw that last part there, the problem is, some years, there, I'm sorry, but there's a ton of kids born, you know, really late. And you can't, you know, we only have, you all know budgets and everything, so we can't have, you know, a lot, that's why we said if the numbers are really high, maybe that year or whatever, we can make it to half-days. And, and then, but this, notice we put the emphasis on the word discussion, because then what might happen is, well, they don't want that because then their kid's not in school. Excuse me, their child is not in school or dead.
Right.
So, it's just a discussion, these are discussions that we put for you to think of outside the box. But trying to, ultimately, our goal, I mean, again, I mean, I've been doing this a long time, but the goal never changes. It's to make children successful and to make them feel really good about themselves, because if you can do that, then they will learn. But if they don't have that confidence in learning, it can really get, you know, the expression, getting off on the wrong foot. It can, it can cause problems, we just want to help them all be successful.
And having clarity for students to feel now like this is where I am and this is where I'm going now, not as ever, not saying retention, but I don't want that word to be out there because that's not what they should be feeling.
It's not retention, we have to get that word out of the vocabulary.
How is transitional kindergarten presented to the parent, like when you find a preschool child that you think needs transition, how is that presented? Is there like a meeting or, I think it should come in a little bit more of a positive, I'm not saying you're not doing that, but like a positive thing. I think a lot of kids, a lot of parents are very nervous about, oh, my kid is at retention, my kid's not doing well, how is that presented?
I'm gonna start with the comment clarity, you know, because you're right, it's anxiety, it's anxiety. It's, it's, you know, it's like, um, the child that's a baby that's in this huge crib and they don't have that, you know, parents need that too and, and we all need that.
Yes.
And something we've done, my first year, the way we did it is we looked at the care resource and we looked at the age. And, um, we actually had the parents come in, the summer we had a meeting with them, we sat them down and with the books and everything, we said, you know, we have this amazing program. We really think your child would benefit, this is what the program is and, um, you know, would you love your child in this program? And we want them, and we explained what the program is and what they benefit from it, but with more clarity, they know exactly what the outcome is. Exactly, you know, why we're selecting a child of someone, so we've had meetings over the summer with the parents, so we wanted to kind of, as a purpose or goal, like, what are we gonna do this year? Um, you know, how is this gonna be helped, because I want it to be presentable, it has to be presentation, it has to be back to school, whatever it needs to be, I'm willing to do it. But I would like to be able to have like, this is our mission for our students and everybody is aware of it, because we are having parents now asking, I want my child in this program, what do I do?
That, that's what I've experienced on my end, basically this year being the first interaction with all that. They reached out to me, you know, I did the orientation at our school and they stopped, you know, kind of grabbed your ear for a minute. Listen, we heard about this, we want to get our kid considered for that, so it's a testament to what you're doing.
It is, part of our problem too is that the local school, um, Colette's School, she's telling parents instead of holding them back, which is a testament to her. Because she's not looking at the dollar sign, she's telling parents, they have a transitional program over there, but the problem is, it's only a limited amount of space. You know, you can't take thirty children in there, you haven't done anybody any good, you had a question?
Yeah, have you had a lot of parents that put the kids in transitional and then actually didn't want them to stay? And, and actually went far aside and put them into first grade and then you've seen them deteriorate at all or, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yes, um, the, the current outcome of the curriculum design is that they had different pathways. They could have gone to kindergarten, they could have gone to first or T one. And, um, because of those avenues, of course, a parent is a parent, you are their support, you are, you know your child best. We know them for a hundred eighty days, for seven hours a day, we know them pretty well, but a parent is a parent and they also know it's best for their child. And we've had those some situations where we had to talk to parents and they wanted their child to move on and yes, they made academic progress and that's the best part of these children. Because they were able to thrive in that hands-on environment, they thrived academically, they met where they should kind of been. And socially, they weren't ready yet, so they moved on and then I was like, you know, there's a different component that was not considered, but data academic was met, so therefore they felt okay and stuff, and so we want to make sure that that does not happen or
That's one of the reasons why we want this, because if you're told, well, there's all these pathways, then parents are signing up for what they hope to happen. But if you're told this is what it is.
Meaning if you go to TK, you go to K.
It's a gift of time, we're really looking at this as a gift of time.
So streamline it, is what you want to streamline programs, it's not all over the place.
We want, we want to make it very black and white, you know, like everything else in life.
Right, I get it.
Would this eliminate the, the transitional first grade then?
Well, we cannot answer that question.
Put the model that you're suggesting.
It's, it's my opinion, now it's my personal opinion, nobody else, if you have nobody
You want me to turn the tape off?
My personal opinion, no, 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 no. Personally, I just think that if we address the low-income children that aren't getting the experiences and if we address the, you know, I cannot say it will eliminate that, but personally, I think that it should eliminate that.
In the conversation we had, I basically, my perspective was that you did this right and you did TK, you went to K, it should eliminate the need for T one.
It should, it should.
So you addressed it earlier and we're waiting for it to go through.
Because our goal is to have, our goal is to help them get where they need to be from the beginning, not wait till, you know.
Traditional one is really retention.
It is a retention, you know, and, but this isn't and we're trying to eliminate some of that burden.
Don't you think the terminology, just, just talking, like, using the word transitional, like, isn't there another word that you can use to get people to understand that it's a two-year program, like to change the mindset?
Year to grow type of thing?
Well, it could be.
Something, because I, I think a kid, it is going to
I would think pre-K, but that's different also.
Well, well, that's, it's different, but along those lines, if you were to, if they were to know the kid had to go to a pre-K, K, like
Different.
They, that was the program, but I think the word transitional has a negative connotation to it.
It could, but if we put the clarity in the criteria and
Correct, but I still think, I still think transitional makes kids, makes parents, may make parents feel like their kids are gonna stand out.
Then we wouldn't have that.
Or be, I don't want to say targeted, it's, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. As a parent, you see that your kid is in a transitional kindergarten, they're not as, they're
Right.
Well, you know, again, that's something that you can discuss in terms of the title of the program.
I'm just asking, I just think that that is, I think the way it's presented.
It's definitely not pre-K now.
Most of the programs that like Ohio and, there's actually four programs in New Jersey that I actually went to observe, they just call it transitional kindergarten. And it is just very, um, black and white in the sense of like, we're in transitional K, we're in, after K, we're going to kindergarten. Like the kids, when they talked about it, that's just how, and it wasn't like a negative thing, so this is, this is just okay, and they didn't really go into it because kids don't really see that, this is where I am.
And it's for parents more, not for kids.
Yeah, yes, uh-huh, um, but that's how the, the other districts, we can of course work on that and change the title to something that we think is more fit or it's more positive, um.
And that is important because ultimately, we want parents not to look that their children are failing, that we're just getting a gift of time.
And deny it.
Yes, yeah.
I know someone who's in transitional kindergarten, she says that the kid is in pre-K. This is what she said, because she looks at it as, um, it's not kindergarten, it's before kindergarten, yeah.
Right. Pre-K.
And if you hear pre-K, then you know that, well, then you have to do K.
And, and quite frankly, to me, that's a good thing because that they're not looking at it as retention.
But we can call it that.
Or kindergarten.
I don't think so, but, I mean, I don't think you need to decide that tonight, that's certainly a conversation that can continue.
No, no, yeah. Um, do you have an approximate, like, let's say there's a hundred kids into the district that are, that come in for kindergarten? Do you have like a percentage, an approximate amount of kids that do not go to a private, or private preschool previously?
Yes.
Is there, is there a law?
Yes.
Well, that doesn't get them all, huh?
No, it doesn't, and, well, think about it, I mean, how many, how many preschools are in the district?
Right, right. Right.
And this is
Well, there's a lot of daycare too though, a lot of people put their kids in daycare, but between, I, I
But there aren't many here and, and there is a very shocking number of children that have, who not have experience.
That come straight from home. Really?
And, and a lot of the parents that have their children in, um, preschool, when they're four, gonna be five in August, are just putting them in kindergarten because they're that age and they don't want to pay that fee anymore.
They need them.
Right, right.
That's right.
That's, that's a lot of
I don't know if the board's aware of it or not, but there's almost in my judgment, a degree of unfairness in that I grew up and taught in Garfield, New Jersey. Garfield, New Jersey was formerly classified as something called an avid school district. Avid school district, you may remember during the Christie administration, he was kind of going to war to try to, uh, legalize the revamp funding. But the long story short, avid school districts get so much funding from the state that we were able to offer full day, free pre-K for three and four-year-olds. And if you, you know, they track those kids and see, you see how much more they improve over course of their education because they're coming into it where they formally were going to go to a private day, uh, pre-K program or anything like that.
Right.
And the population explodes because of that, everybody, you know, if I can live in Garfield, or I can live in Lodi, which is over the border, well,
Right.
I could pay twelve thousand dollars in Lodi for my kid to go to a pre-K program, if I can move to Garfield and you go for free.
I mean, it's kind of ironic to have this conversation when we're having such a budget crunch, but again, thinking outside the box, if we can get some.
Yeah, start with this.
But that's what we're here for, we're here for the community and the children, because they're our future.
Right.
So the earlier we can get them, the better off we will be.
And, and, and obviously, there is some funding out there because you mentioned that some of the schools have for grants.
So whose job is to do that?
Yeah, well, that was, that was, in my, if, I recollect, it was a year or two ago. They, they may have piggybacked on programs they already offered and that was supplemental.
Didn't they have a half-day and then I think they
I think, I think, so, it's, it's one of my conversations with Mr. Mooney at the time was, they, if I remember correctly, they already had something that they afforded them the opportunity to apply for at that point. I think it was obviously Brian's.
They get busted.
They don't, they don't, and that's also been an issue, but that's another issue, that's preschool, we won't talk about that.
They don't. But it's been successful without it.
Transitional kindergarten is getting us, yes, but the, but the preschool, unless you're a special needs, they do not get us.
A transitional.
Right, and so we have parents that drive their children to, to the preschool program, pick them up.
So the idea was just to kind of give everybody a common foundation of understanding to build conversations upon down the road, so you know what we're, what's up.
I think you, I think you guys have a really good format here and, I mean, I think it's enough for them to work off of, to give us something, like literally.
You're okay with us making a draft and bringing it to you?
You were the expert.
I think they only, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys are, you're in the thick of it, so bring us what, what's working.
You know, we're not administrators, so it's not something that we would do upon ourselves.
No, but you, if you're well-informed, you are the experts, so you can then bring it to Mr. Ball and then we can
We are. We are, and as I said, you know, our, our goal is really ultimately clarity.
Do, do we know how much it would potentially cost, uh, to have to be a reduced lunch on, you know, part of the program?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I think the lunch, the lunch comment was just, um,
It's a much larger conversation than just you asking that question.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that one.
He asked how much, how much they go.
They, they, it's to qualify as a free reduced lunch, they get that, and it was just
Oh. Yeah, because in the past, we had, I can off the top of my head think of two children that was signed, wanted to sign up, but they, they found out it wasn't free, they thought it was free.
Yeah, that's, that's more like, if you're in that category, can we give you free preschool?
And so they had to leave and then their child didn't get in preschool, where, you know, my thought is, if we could possibly make sliding scale, that's another way of trying to alleviate it's two issues that end up in the same place, one is very, very young children that are developmentally young as well and the other is the lack of experience.
And we just wanted to be very positive, we're getting feedback so far, we just want to clarify more, just kind of continue going to next school year, looking forward to it. Um, and looking at students we have coming for the pair streaming, we have these students, we're trying to make class lists and we're trying to start this program and kind of define those names and have your support with that.
You're doing a great job, you have a great one, so thank you ladies very much.
So whoever ends up to be the administrator, keep in mind that we have to do this in the summer contacting parents. Thank you.
Thank you. We got you, we got you, Pam, read in there.
So a couple of the things that I can talk about in public is, we don't need an answer today just to think about for later in the month. Uh, we talked about in the Friday rundown that insurance distribution, and I'm just gonna refer to it as a rebate, even though that's not what it is, but it, it's easier to wrap your minds around. We said, what was that gonna be on our end, about eighteen thousand?
Yes.
So the board's gonna have to reflect on, you know, how we want to use that money, some ideas that I've heard along the way were, you know, putting it into kids, which, you know, I'd be implying to view uh, six thousand dollars per school in a student activities account. The other aspect of it is now, we're in a situation where we potentially have to take an ESL teacher who's The other aspect of it is now, we're in a situation where we potentially have to take an ESL teacher who's part-time, convert him to full-time, and if that's something we can, um, review, or if anyone else has any ideas. And out.
Well, if, if I could just add, and we really need to do that quickly, because if those monies don't get earmarked for something, then they just end up as a refund of a prior year expenditures, and we'll lose that. So we need to earmark, putting it somewhere for future use, so that it's not just, um.
Should we re-airmark? If, if we earmark that for, doesn't come to fruition? And that, you know what I'm saying?
You already used it.
There's a one thing done assignment to that fund.
I don't know, it depends, like, I don't know if we decide to put it in the student activities account, that then we can use it for general fund expenditures.
That is kind of discretion, or.
Can we have time until the end of June for our team meeting to do this?
Yeah, I think that we should do something, we should talk about it and have something on the agenda for June.
There was three options. Four years.
Okay. Or, I mean, we could probably do it in July, 'cause at what, it won't be closed, and I could still journal entry it, but I wouldn't go beyond July, making a decision.
And then, we've got a PO sitting on my desk for Strauss Esme. Um, you've had presentation by school boards, I know there's been some discussion about, do you wanna switch? Um, I don't know if, at this juncture, that wise, it was gonna cost, um, was it fourteen thousand? To come, if, if we moved to school board?
Wasn't after that annually cheaper, like seven thousand dollars?
I thought, I thought the annual fee was fairly comparable, I could be wrong about that, but there was an initial fee of, you know, auditing everything you have. Um, so, you know, I don't wanna sign that PO until the board and I, we have some consensus or a majority on what we wanna do, uh, because I've seen folks experience sign POs and then.
Yes. My whole feeling about Strauss Esme and school boards is, I just feel Strauss Esme didn't portray that policy the way it was.
This is getting to the mandated comment versus the.
Manded versus.
So I don't know, and I don't, they did a remarkable job of describing it, but just so, 'cause I had a conver, I've had the opportunity of a conversation with them.
I'm, right.
Just so everyone understands, when they mandate, when they put their designation mandate on, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a state law mandate, it's them as the agency, you're paying their criteria. And their criteria was like threefold, and it was along the lines of, one, is it a law that specifically states that? Two, is it a process where it's required, like CUSAC? Or three, is it, is whatever it is so critical to the operations of the school district that they're gonna stay a bit mandated? And that's what they use.
And I, my own opinion is, is you need to tell it like it is and not give us these scenarios. I mean, that's how I feel, and I don't know how many other policies that you looked at and just agreed that they were mandated, and just pushed them, and to think that when reviewing the policies, you may have to have your attorney do digging, but I don't know, it, it just left the sour teeth for enough, more so about the process versus anything else, so I'm for switching.
I'm open-minded to either, concern I have with Strauss Esme is we, uh, we invited them to come out and present, like, in the FBI did, and they basically said, you know, it's too far of a drive, you know, can we do it over the phone? And to me, we've spent a lot of money over the years into Strauss Esme, and, you know, I would've liked to see them come up, an hour and a half, two-hour drive on time, to try to answer questions. That's, you know, but I'm open-minded to either, uh, but that was a concern I had too, is kind of just the lack of commitment, I felt like, to the, to answer the questions.
How does everyone else feel?
I think it probably wasn't a good place, and I think they probably should have sent somebody up, since we impressed it. But, um, I personally think that either of the companies, I think that our policy committee needs to, um, show more interest in reviewing the policies. I mean, I know that we pay them to do it, but when the committee gets together, there's gotta be a reason that we're getting together before we just come here and ask for it. So I think that, uh, in a sense, we want the lesson that way, that if it says mandated, okay, well, why, why does it say mandated? Let's dig a little deeper ourselves, I mean, we're not, I don't want to be the lawyer for that, but, but the, the.
If you're gonna question whether it's mandated or not, you're going to need an attorney to get an answer, if you're gonna have some challenge.
Yeah, if, if it gets out of control, I guess, yeah, you know? But I mean, what, what is our job really as a committee? Other than to kind of review what they've given us to, 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 you know, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be more cautious after that, I'm not gonna be out there.
Sure, but I just feel, I just feel, I don't know.
Who's to say that school board doesn't wanna do the same thing?
Well, the policy was the same, the verbiage of the policy ended up being the same, although I do see what you're saying, and I, even when I was on the board before, I never realized that there was, but I think, and I have to agree with Dorothy at that point, I think that was us missing it, because in the sense, when they put mandated on it, it was mandated by their protocol, so we could've asked the question, well, why is this, why are you surmising this is mandated? It was a hot-button policy, we all know that, so I think that threw up the red flag. So there's no reason that when we get that from Strauss, that we can't say, like you just said, why is this mandated? I asked that question a month before the meeting even happened, and I addressed it through our president, it went to the attorney. I had an answer, that answer, a month before the meeting, it was based on those three criteria. So we could've asked that ahead of time, and even when I was on the board last time, I missed completely any M. To me, it was the assumption, so, you know, assuming art, so.
We all know that when Bob and I went to the problem, we went to that meeting in Sparta, what was it, the? The county board?
The county board.
I said. Does anyone, does anyone have school, uh, New Jersey, you know, Strauss Esme, everyone has Strauss Esme, and said, did anyone know that this policy is not technically mandated? Nobody knew it, so the problem, I feel, is on a bigger scale. You can't have a company that is presenting policies, say it's mandated, and then everybody does what they do, assuming it's mandated. I just, I just think it's bad, bad business, it's just.
It's the, also the work of the board to also investigate.
Why would you investigate? Like, I wouldn't investigate, honestly, it was mandated, but we put it on hold, because there was question.
But Bob will play it.
I would encourage members of the policy committee, um, I attended another county school board meeting, there were people that tended to have, um, their policies handled through, um, New Jersey school boards, and, there, there are issues with, no matter who you use, and nobody's a hundred percent right. So I would encourage people on the, um, policy committee to reach out to other board members in, um, New Jersey that have New Jersey school boards as a client, and ask them their experience, and then come back to the board with a recommendation as to what we should do in the forums regards to policies.
When does it have to be tweeted? Yeah, it's hard to be decided. Well, July first, if we don't issue another purchase order, then, you know, I don't know that they shut, you know, I don't know that they shut us off.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know about the site crashes.
That would be a problem.
I would, I would suspect, we'll check, I would suspect you have what you have.
On the twenty fourth, I have that board's director at the Ed Commission, and I could.
Okay. Yeah, everybody's there.
Everybody, yeah, there's a big, I serve on the Ed Commission, and there's a lot of different board members, and I could ask that question.
Yeah, I'm curious, who has the school boards?
That's on the twenty fourth, and then we could discuss it on the twenty sixth.
Strauss, I mean, I can tell you Strauss Esme has the overwhelming amount, so we're just a mistake.
Yes.
They definitely sign up, yeah.
The other idea that I think some of you spoke to is like, you pay a good fee for them, I mean, whether Strauss Esme or school boards, to be the agency that monitors laws and cases, and to provide you with this information, it's just, it would be too overwhelming. You can investigate, you know, this policy or that policy, dig a little deep, what, to try to monitor all that, it would, you wouldn't be able to do it.
Right, maybe they're just.
Yeah, because they're the compliance people, pretty much, we can't afford to have a compliance person here to do that, be the one to charge. So we don't, the attorneys.
Do we have to, like, vote on company or anything, like, you know, the word says we need to be on the agenda for the twenty sixth? If we're gonna make a change, we would need to do that, but we would just, you know. So it's something else that we need to do.
Do we get the hard facts numbers, the difference?
Yes, I will tell you that it definitely would be more money to go to.
Well, there's, there's definitely that large fee upfront.
School boards, and we do not, we do not budget for that, so in my presentation, when I talked about the plus and the minus, that would definitely be.
How long the contract? How long is their contract? Is that a three-year contract?
We just issue a purchase order for a year and a year.
Oh, it's just a year?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And, uh.
Do you, do some research, does that come here?
Do it for the year, that's fine.
Yeah, keep it for, keep it for a year.
It's very close to the fold, to want to yank this, right, and be shut down.
You could, you could go to the. You could go to the, the conference, and, um, they both have representatives there, and you can go to those tables and ask them for information, and when you're there, you can, um, have conversations with other board members, ask them what their experiences are with each, and then next year, so that there's not an issue, uh, with us not having money budgeted, or an issue with knowing which one is a more, uh, valid choice for sausage one, and make a more educated decision as to the one is open or not.
Right, and, and with what you just said, if you determine after October and you do your research, letting school boards know is sooner than later, because I think that process is not an overnight process, so you could have, you could have them working on whatever you wanna, if you decided to choose, they could work on it, and so it'd be ready to go July first of the year if you were making a change, 'cause that would be another problem, is we'd be doing it now, and we might not have anything up and running for September, three, three months or something.
I'm signing.
So pretty much we're gonna keep it for you?
One more year. One more year.
So I'm gonna sign that PO.
Sign it.
Sign.
No, no pun intended, oh, sorry.
You got video proof.
Oh, that was great, you're kidding me.
And an outstanding, I did that, you know, some of you are more passionate about than others, I think, but substitute pay rates, you know, I solicited information from the county, my county associate.
Yeah, so they're gonna get it back, yeah.
Didn't, no, and I so, I followed up again last week, and they still haven't gotten it back, and I, I think it just comes down to at the end of the year, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that it's just not as big a priority in other places, maybe, as it's been a conversation topic here. Um, and I didn't know how you were overthinking this, or I was overthinking this, is just switching, reverting back to that former model better? And it, it, is that the end of the? So, long story short, you may, the board may have to make a decision on its own without the rest of the county information.
What are they getting right now? What are they getting right now? Cause I'm limited.
They're getting eighty dollars, and then after ninety days, they get eighty-five.
And, I mean, I've seen signs for a hundred dollars, ninety-five dollars, global to here.
Well, they're, 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 they're getting eighty dollars plus five dollars more if they don't have a degree. If they have a degree, they're getting eighty-five to ninety, and if they have a teaching certificate, they're getting ninety to ninety-five, which is more lucrative for each model than the reverting back to the old one.
So, long story short, again, we don't need an answer now, it's just something we're gonna have to, you know, come to an agreement on over the summer.
So how many are getting the full ninety-five? Do we have a number on that?
Well, there's forty-seven, and that may have changed plus or minus, but basically, when I was first on this, there's forty-seven, um, subs in the system that have the certificate. There's twenty-seven that just have a degree, and there's twenty-four that have just the sub cert. I can't tell you right now how many are, I'm sorry, what?
Can you give me those numbers again? Can you give me those numbers again?
Yes, twenty, twenty-four with no, just the, the sub cert. Twenty-seven with, um, a degree, and forty-seven that have a teacher certification.
Any disease.
I would say we put a little synopsis in the rundown, but you told the folks we didn't need to do that, all right?
Well, you can still get this.
Oh, geez.
I gotta get you tagged on.
And then the rates were eighty to eighty-five, eighty-five to ninety, and ninety to ninety-five, after the, the ninety days.
Can I ask you a question? Do you know how many of them are actively subbing, or are you just looking at the sub list?
I actually took this from, I believe, from the spreadsheet of people being paid.
Okay, that's right.
'Cause we have to, you know, we track it for Affordable Healthcare Act reasons.
Right.
And, and also, so it's very easy to know who was close to the ninety or whatever.
Right, right, and you have subs that have subbed in your district for quite some time. They have been very loyal to you, and I'd ask this board to think about, and she can tell you too, who comes in consistently, 'cause she's consistently cutting them a paycheck. When you're making them wait ninety days to go up, every Septem, they go to June, every September, they gotta go ninety more days. It takes a while for them to reach those ninety days, many of them are not reaching those ninety days until December, January, and February.
So what if we got rid of the ninety-day window?
For those who have subbed in district consistently, that should be their reward.
Right.
I would be upset, seventeen years I've served district, I've come into district, I'm not actively subbing anymore. I would be upset if somebody just came in, and boom, they get it. You have people like, um, Michelle Clink, she's been Sharon Tramello, um.
So you're saying that they, they're there, like, they could be serving, subbing for eighty days, and they're still getting the lower amount?
Yeah.
So if we got, I mean, my thought is, why don't we just get rid of that?
Yeah, but, if, if you're coming in for your first year, then you should go the ninety days.
For, for, for. Ninety days to qualify in the following year, then you start out at.
At where, yeah, you left off, you, you could look at something like that.
I, I think, my own personal opinion, if, if someone's been around and sticking through, I think that's an insult to take them back.
You, you, like, you just keep taking them back, and, and that, the discussion there for them is, it's an insult. You know, like, you're asking them to prove themselves and their loyalty to district every September. And if, if you're working eight hours a day, and you're paying eighty or ninety dollars, that's like ten dollars an hour you're paying someone.
And so does that make a difference?
Minimum wage come July is going up to eleven dollars an hour, December, it's going up to fifteen.
So what you guys, what you guys propose as far as, um, I mean.
They could go work a quick check and make more money.
Action park, lessons.
And there's such many people that, you know, work the same job, you make eighty-five dollars in June, and then go back to September and make eighty.
And these are people with degrees.
Yeah, Ken, I, I, I'm just bringing it up as a discussion point, we don't, we don't need to make a decision, we probably shouldn't make a decision today,
Yeah.
but moving forward, it's something that would be.
Well, I was kind of hoping that it would be on the agenda for, uh, June, because you have a lot of subs that, um, you know, they got the summer to think about this, so if they knew that there was something that was positively done towards this, it would make their summer better, otherwise, they're gonna be.
Mr. Allen.
Take, take it, since this is at a work session, it's something that doesn't trouble me, that, we really shouldn't be discussing this, like, the appropriate committee should be, prior to the next meeting, and make a decision on what their recommendation, recommendation will be for the next meeting.
We also have to class it out.
Because it wasn't budgeted.
Yes, this is, again, this is the plus and the minus that I was talking about.
The plus and, plus and, plus and.
And, and tonight, what we talked about is minuses, several pluses.
Which, which, which committee would this be, which committee would this be budget, or, uh, right, or budget?
Finance. I think finance.
Should get discussions, and we can get it done in time for, uh, September, as long as it's on the agenda for, I guess, it would have to be July or August.
So, this is because we're having this type of meeting?
Right.
That's why the issue, the issue is.
It's our business meeting.
That's what I'm saying, it's technically a work session?
Well, it's a work session, and it specifically talks about no action being, uh, taken.
Did anybody, 'cause I, I'd like to have an agenda item on the, on June agenda, joining the whole PATCon consortium for the ESL money? Does anybody have any questions about that, that I, you know, probably need to research the answer to, but.
No, I think, it, it's a benefit to us by doing that, because then we're not filtering out those funds on our own, correct?
Yeah, yeah. We, we've been decontrolling.
Right, so then that way, it becomes like a whole group effort.
Yeah.
So it becomes beneficial versus negative.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes, there's eight districts that have joined because the number needs to be over ten thousand. So, you know, based upon that, everybody's getting around the same amount of money. If you join it together, the lead, you know, HAPACON has the greater responsibility and more work to do in this. We just get to say what we're gonna use it for and then have the ability to spend the money under our, so it would be more admin administrative because it's like sort of do. They have to, they have to put together the application to be the, so they have the work to do to form the consortium. We just say what we want our money to be spent for.
And so it will be spent on ESL.
Supply.
Supply.
Yes.
Yeah, program.
Actually, Patrick was gonna check to see what you want, but I assume it's gonna be supplies.
Yeah, yeah, I had a conversation with it.
All right, well, we're gonna move into executive session. What on, just to, just to clarify with a work session, so for the future, because we're gonna do this once every three months, I believe. Obviously, we're not moaning on stuff like that, but you shouldn't even come to some sort of consensus, I guess, right, for the future, since it's a work session.
Well, I'm a little, I'm a little.
You can garner a consensus though.
I'm a little confused about that too, because when we have the policy committees, we've kind of come to a consensus as to so what something can be on the budget to pass the filter.
Well, it's. There's a quorum there, we're Francis.
There's, but yeah, there's not a quorum at a, at a.
Francis would use to that menu, but.
Yeah, sure, exactly. So in a committee, you have less than a forum, so you can't officially take action. In a work session, you could discuss ideas and then, as Mr. Hayden indicated, refer it back to the committee so that it could be, um, discussed more in detail, then brought to administration so that it can be formally proposed via an agenda item to the board at a regular meeting. But the work session is to get ideas, um, bring ideas to administration and so that they can flourish more in committee.
So we could, we could still.
So you could still get a consensus though, without, that's not a violation by getting, a consensus of ideas, I should say, like what we talked about with Strauss Esme.
Just like ideas. Right.
We had some ideas floating around.
To get a sense of what the board's direction is, what for, but not a consensus in formally determining action or pre-determining action.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so like when we have a policy committee, um, we would, we would be able to determine, like, there's gonna be policies of the committee to, or on the agenda to be approved or.
We move them forward or at least.
Right, move them forward, right. So by doing this tonight, we skip yet another, um, time in order to do that.
Yes.
Because we haven't had a policy committee since, um, I don't even know it, but.
Last one, last, no, the month before.
And generally.
That right, because it's a bag with budgets, right.
Yeah, and generally unless.
We didn't have one in April either.
Yeah, we did have one in April.
We did not have one in April. We had one in March, which was at six o'clock before the meeting. And you said that you didn't feel like the one in April was necessary to have, um.
Because we were looking at different policy.
And unless we have updates issued from, like, the, the updates will come from Strauss Esme that we have to share with you.
March twenty eighth, you handed us a policy, uh, a pack of policies, it's got twelve policies, uh, that we haven't touched yet, I think.
Yeah, I don't recall specifically what all twelve were, but there were things that we kicked back or wanted more information about, right?
Well, then we had, we had the board.
Or we sent.
One was the earned, one was the earned sick.
Yeah.
And then we were going with this or this.
Yeah.
One was the earned sick leave that you would specifically ask people to kind of go over that. And, um, and the rest were, one said they're not from anywhere, really, that's. I guess they're on their, could be revised, we might have the, and balls and people like that, built in a blanket like that. But that we weren't explaining.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if they have one in early July, um, because we're not doing anything this month, I'm not sure, so.
Right, because we're doing this.
Right. Um, any other comments from board members before we move on to audience remarks? All right, uh, we'll move on to audience remarks. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest to the issue. Seeing none, um, you have a public comment?
Yeah, a public comment, let's, I'll give you a public comment. Um, Mrs. Hagman's art theme for the summer is already filled up to, for one year, right? Uh, sent the papers in by June twentieth or whatever, and it's moving for June twentieth, but I think both weeks are filled for the art class. So a lot of people are finding us out now and they would like to have her do another week. I don't know if maybe you can trust that, her decision.
I can, I can.
I think last year, she, she actually did add a week last year.
Yeah. It's, uh, that, it's really a private, you're talking about her enrichment stuff, so it's a private venture on her end. I, I'll mention it to her, I don't know what her summer, you know, that, that may be what she wants to commit to.
Right. Right. Right, I think last year, she ended up adding the year before, adding the week, but, um, just so maybe you could mention that to her because we're out now, that's filled up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I can't promise that she.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
I also wanna ask, um, whether board members are for or against, uh, it doesn't matter, but would all of you be in favor of, uh, voting on the, the field trip? Potentially in, in June and having some sort of clarity, uh, going forward, one way or another, um, because, you know, just to drag it on would be, I feel like, counterproductive.
Would you have a Washington?
At the eighth grade, yeah, Washington field trip. Everybody would be okay with potentially doing it.
I would, I would just need to consult with Mr. Schwartz and see where, sure.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we will move on to executive session. No action will be taken, um, approximately. How long is your, your second one?
Uh, fifteen, twenty minutes on my end.
Okay, so.
Three hours and thirty minutes.
Uh, we'll be in there approximately, hopefully.
Half hour.
Forty-five minutes, let's say.
Sue.
Job, let's talk about it for another six minutes.
Another three.
Well, the person calls me and then I have to leave earlier.
I'm looking for a resolution now, sorry.
We're pursuant to NJSA ten four dash twelve P, the Sussex One and Regional Board of Education excludes the public from that portion of a public meeting at which the board discusses any of the matters described in NJSA ten four dash twelve P, one through nine. Now therefore be resolved, the Sussex One and Regional Board of Education shall enter into closed session to discuss legal personnel matters and superintendent evaluation. Now therefore be further resolved by the Sussex One and Regional Board of Education pursuant to NJSA ten four dash thirteen D. The time, when and the circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public is where the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
All right, looking for motion.
I'll make a motion.